All right, I'm opening the meeting of the Cold Spring zoning board of appeals for March 12th, 2004. Several things on the agenda tonight, we'll start with two workshops and I suggest doing them in. The opposite order, well, I guess, James, are you the only one here representing 133, 135?
Matt's going to be here, he's starting to promote.
Oh, but it's maybe it'd be better if we then start with five.
Yeah, you don't mind that.
Well, we're just getting started, you didn't miss anything.
Yeah.
We have a quorum, four members, which is the entire board at this point. Four out of five seats. So we'll have a workshop on about five furnace street. And James Hartford, one of the applicants is here. James, would you like to give us just a brief summary of the project, not, not the whole? Presentation and not justification, but just to orient us so we can kind of ease into it.
Okay, great, so I'm both the owner and the architect for this project, my own house on furnace street. It's one of the attached historic structures on the street that was originally workers housing the foundry. Mine is the only remaining structure that doesn't have a second story addition and so we would actually like to. Add a second story addition. So when I say mine is the only one, there's my, my house has a twin. To the north, which is number three furnace street, and then across the street, there are a series of other. Similar houses that were similarly configured and all of them had a pad, series of additions on them. Mine did have an addition, probably it was an enclosed porch. You know, fairly historic to the house and then that was enclosed and then expanded on probably in the 1950s. This is approximately last hundred those in addition to that. So we're proposing to enclose the back, our current back stoop on as kind of a glass in sun ring. And then do a second story addition over that, that rear addition that preceded this.
Karen, I'm not getting internet access on the. VCS network, it's, it joined the wifi network without it automatically, but it's saying no, no internet. You know, it's working or?
It should be sometimes.
EDPWN, is that?
Is it asking for a password?
No, it just joined all by itself. So the wifi is on, but it says no internet. There are three VCS networks though.
I got on.
Are you on VCS EDPWN?
That's the correct one.
ADPWN, yes. Let me try something else.
I didn't, I didn't click the agreement.
Yeah, read it all.
Yeah.
Mary Ann Rainey.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
James.
When you get connected, you get my message about the. It's like, I'm gonna be there, just late travel back.
Okay. Well, all's well now. All right. I wanted to ask you about building area now, well, let's first. Consider what the variances are that we need here. The referral from the. 路灯 enforcement officer mentions lot coverage and side yard setbacks. And that is basically what I, I saw as well. The building areas might increase a little bit and so the lot coverage will rise. And the side yard setbacks, they're non-conforming already and they will. Get slightly tighter, just, just by hair.
And the, the rise is gonna be very, very small. Because the, the back stoop is actually a covered porch, so we're just looking at. Setting the, the rear roof line to match the neighbor's house.
Like. Um, let's see. When I added up. The building area, I got about, I got a little higher number than what you said, I got 963 square feet. And I was wondering if you included the front porch when we calculated.
Yeah, she had done the calculation, so I can't say what she had used for notes, but. I was thinking she had. Looking at the blue dash line on. We do too, at least like she did not include that.
Okay. So. I think that will push it up to around 963 and that makes a percentage, a coverage percentage of 38.3. So a little more. A little more than what appears on the. The pose all. This building is defined as any part that has a roof, any part of the building that has a roof.
And I wonder if she had included the back porch, should be this place firing off that.
Right, because that would get added then, because it's gonna have that overhang of the second floor.
Yeah. These are existing conditions, so it's not like it's. Living driven by the addition.
Second question is. The list of neighbors, adjoining neighbors who will be notified about the hearing. Think you need to add a few more addresses, chapter 134 says it. The. Neighbors to be notified include all those across the street and adjoining, as well as anyone who could see the project. So. In, in the category of directly opposite, there are two more, 159 Main Street and four Furnace Street. They, they really can't see this, they won't see the addition, but they are directly opposite. By furnace and that's what the code says to do, to notify them. And then in the category of others who can see it. It seems to me 147 main and 15 long are. A joint, very, they're but your backyard, the rear of property. Were. Contiguous, definitely they should be notified, they can certainly see it. Those, those four addresses at a minimum, and, and if you, if there are others that. Can see it through your backyard, like further down on a wall, the next one down on a wall or. I mean, I can't really tell from the street, but if you.
Yeah. If I can see them, they can see me.
Yeah.
Yeah, a matter of impact.
Best to be cautious and send a notice, just so someone doesn't come, come up later and say, I never got the notice that I'm entitled to. That would be the one I'm just. Was mentioning, thinking of was, let's see here, 11 wall is the next one down beyond 15.
So you indicated the side yards are affected, you know, by that marginal overhang?
Yeah, they, I guess the overhang is going to extend slightly farther out into the side yard. The southern side yard.
And as you indicated, some of these, there's no coverages to the west. Pretty overhanging again, or is it gonna drop down, name to the wall? The, the blue is the existing footprint of the, of the house right now. That's right, right, the back porch is here, but that too is actually covered, yeah, so we're looking to. So this is, you know, some, a very strange, it's probably. On the site, so that. You can see that they exist, the neighbor's house actually encroaches on my property by this triangle, right, so it's considerable. We're looking to extend the, the back of our house to align with that. On this porch is, is cut, the porch cover extends about, you know, a foot and a half further past this stoop. And so we're looking at the platform, maybe enclose it like this, you know, extending it over so we match the back there. So the entire. Additional roof area, including the overhangs would be that little. This currently is porch and the porch is covered.
Yeah.
And this whole area was just a stoop, step up or was it just open, open space? This, this area is currently the covered stoop. And, you know, my back room of my house extends all the way to this line right there currently. So our second story addition would, our goal is to match the back of the neighbor's house, so slightly overhanging the lower levels. So you're not actually gonna move out the back wall on the first floor at all?
No.
You've once had it overhanged.
Yeah.
With the, with the proposed barn.
Yeah. Right.
The last year one, but was a lot more substantial. What, what do you think this percentage, this measurement is? This is, it's about 16 inches.
Well, that raises the question of. When measuring the building area. It should they, the definition in the code is some, says something about at ground plane. The footprint at the ground plane and. So does that mean they should take the footprint of the first floor, if the second floor hasn't, it hangs over, extends out. This is something that's always been kind of vexed, a vexed point in the old code and. Maybe in the new, I'm gonna look at the definition of building area here.
Not sure if we addressed it, I knew we had the difference of opinion. On it back when it was a little more substantial and early project.
There is language in here talking about how a. These, like a roof overhang is permitted, it's not count against.
The living space. Just a little historical context, that's why Tudor's houses have that additional projection. Exactly for that reason, this goes back to all the, so. Oh, for the plane?
You mean, in Elizabethan time, they were using up that kind of trick?
Wow.
Oh, to get, yeah, right.
See? There's a reason why.
It's a building area, is the total area taken horizontally at the grade plane. Of the principal building and all accessory buildings. Total area taken at horizontally at the grade plane.
So that's for the area coverage.
For building area, which is how you calculate lot coverage, first you determine building area. I do think. We would have to just go by that, I mean. That's pretty clear.
Yeah, change it now.
So like, I, I, some cantilevered wing coming out on the second floor. I guess doesn't get counted. Part of building area.
And it doesn't often create an issue, but it has come up.
Well, yeah, only, and it's never been enormous, made, made an enormous difference one way or the other, and in this, in this case too, it's, it's gonna be small, but. That does, so when you recalculate the building area, not count the overhang, I mean, take it up horizontally at the grade. But do include. And so at the end of all that, you should have a different number, probably slightly higher than what's in here, but not that much.
Okay, and I don't count the neighbors encouragement on my property, right?
No, no.
No, you subtract it. I think, I think it's a credit.
So when houses are.
Could pay credit.
That close together, do you actually share a wall?
I mean, he absorbs that part of the taxes.
So there is no, on, on that wall. The side of his house that's over your first, that you're gonna be going, building up against, there's no window or anything.
There is a window that's been covered over from the inside, that too is illegal, they're, they're not, I mean. You're not allowed to have lot line windows to begin with, but. My window built on my property. The window's on your property. It's on my property, yeah, so.
What if it looks?
It just gave light to about them. So I think, you know, we make note of the fact that, that, you know, any kind of ruling you make out of. What we've seen like reference to the plane.
Right, yeah, this is.
So it's not ignored and it's not.
Well, luckily, I think the language is pretty clear as a guide to future boards and. And we are instructed by New York law. Well, the law says when a language is ambiguous to resolve in favor of the applicant.
Yeah.
All right, so we have covered, we've. Established the variances at issue here, we've talked about the neighbors to be notified. We've looked at the various characteristics of the project. Do board members have any other questions? About the, oh, one other thing. Providing photographs is not mandatory, but we do. Urge, we urge applicants to submit them for the hearing. It, it works in favor of your application, it gives you something to point to, gives us something to refer to. The photos that help us visualize the impact of the project. Especially point, point of view from neighbors, neighboring properties to the extent that you can, like from your own backyard, looking toward the house, like what? What will people see when this? Project is completed, what, what will they be looking at?
So rendering as well, that's.
Well, yeah, if that's not too hard.
Right, on top of superimposed over the.
Sure, the more the better, really.
That's what we had for a few products that were complicated and.
And you can. You don't have to provide them all as, as photographs, like six copies of everything, and you. You, I mean, at a minimum of one, one set of printed photographs, and then you could also post them online if you want, we could look at them. Ahead of time on screen.
It's lazy, it just isn't. Yeah. Not like Alice's restaurant, ten by twenty glossies.
So.
When the planning board is already looked at.
They have not, no, and I'm gonna be getting to that question of a referral to the planning board when we talk about the hearing, which is next on the list. Is there a general sense here that the application is ready for a public hearing? Is it, aside from the minor adjustments we've been talking about?
I, I believe so, I think it covers. The concerns of the building sector. And, you know, looking at. For our own purposes on the overhang issues and. How we dealt with them in the past, I, I don't see that moving further.
Okay. I will make a motion until, and then we can vote on it, but before that, we have to establish a date, and that's a little. But we have several kinds of notice requirements and referrals that we have to comply with under. Especially the new, the new version of the code is, has a little more. So we have a 10 day publication notice, essentially what it boils down to is the soonest. We could hold the hearing is four weeks from now. And that's will be Tuesday.
Nine, the April.
Yeah, second, second Tuesday in April, April nine. That will let us place the notice by the, could. Yeah, we'll get 10 days of publication, gives you plenty of time to nail the neighbors and the only. Sort of. Oh, thing is that the code says we have to give a referral, we have to refer. All ZVA applications to the planning board for comment, for optional comment, if they choose, and we have to give them 30 days to respond. But the, the day we just talked about is 28 days from now. And they may not be meeting this Thursday, and so that leaves one meet, one more meeting on the 28th between now and this hearing day. So. Let's see what. This is, this is, this referral thing is something that ZVA didn't used to do, so it's kind of a. I think 30 days is kind of long, but that's what we're stuck with for the moment. You have any suggestions, Karen, on how we could? finesse this so they don't have to wait six weeks for a hearing? I mean, I could see. Maybe I could contact the chair of the planning board immediately and see if he thinks. They can provide a comment by the, by their meeting of the 28th. And then we can.
Do that.
Then we can, so in other words, we can set a date tonight of, of. Of four weeks from now, contingent on that, that action by the planning board, that response. When we respond to a planning board, and he gets back to me that he doesn't think he can. We'll just have to wait six weeks, but. We can't give a notice, we can't mail the notices or print the notice of the hearing until. So we get that from him, get that confirmation, so maybe, maybe I'll do that.
And you have this digital policy.
The application, yeah.
It's easy for you to share.
Yeah.
Are, are you then talking, going out to the 23rd? Or if you don't think we're gonna make it?
No, right now, what I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we hold the hearing on April 9th. And that's contingent on. An assurance from the chair of the planning board that his board can. Respond within, within that, before that date, can provide any comment they may have. Before that date, and if he says yes, that we can go ahead, I mean. And announce the date publicly through publication and so on. I would second that motion furthermore.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry, if we have to. If they, if they give you an answer at their next meeting. On the 28th. And then we're talking about. Filing the notice, publishing.
Well, what I'm.
I don't think you will make it.
No, right, exactly, that, I'm, what I'm suggesting is. When I get that assurance from him like tomorrow or whatever, soon, then we put the notice in, even though we haven't heard from that.
Okay.
So. It's a little bit of a gamble, I mean, what if they, they never answer, even though he said they would.
But we shouldn't have to wait for B if we can execute A and expect that there's a potential that the gamble went out.
I do, I do wanna ask the trustees if they would modify that element in the chapter 134. Eventually, but for the moment, we have to comply with it, so. That's the best. Compromise I can think of to avoid, I mean, otherwise, if we want to be 100% sure, we could just set the hearing six weeks from now. If, if, assuming, I'm assuming it matters to you, James, in terms of the schedule, or it doesn't matter to you.
It doesn't really matter, I mean, obviously, if we. Get movement, you know, then the faster can move ahead, so, I mean, if we could do the ninth, I would appreciate that, but.
Well, worst case scenario is. Planning board never answers and with they, they get 30 days and. And they don't answer, but we've announced it, we, we have to change it, you'll have to do another round of mailing.
Oh, that's.
We'll have to run another ad, which is not a big deal, but you'll have to do another round of mailings.
I mean, do you wanna check with the planning board chair? Get his response and we can decide that, or do you wanna, do you need to?
Well, I would. I would like to set it and vote on the date with, with contingency tonight. And then. And then if, if he answers affirmatively, and I think there's a good chance he will, then, then we go ahead and make the announcements and. Will be all set then for the ninth, assuming that he does, his board does make their comment and. It's not like there's anything. Huge here that they need to spend a lot of time.
Okay, great, yeah, let's go take.
Like I said, the worst case scenario, which is hard to imagine, that they, they don't answer at all, then the worst scenario is we'll have to change the date after having announced. The first one means another round of mailing.
Yeah.
So.
So we were announced at our next meeting, and we, even if we, well, yes, actually, we could have a hearing the next.
Not, no, wouldn't allow us to have it in two weeks.
Yeah, no, I know, I get it, I get it, but there might be other matters that come up, otherwise we would appear just for that. One statement that we found that the planning board has not responded.
Oh, I see, just to read, to set the new date, yeah, we would have to, that's right, we'd have, oh. All right, how's, how about, rephrase my motion? So I rephrase my motion to say that I moved that we. Hold the hearing on April 9th. Contingent on a response in the next day or two from the chair of the planning board, that he. Fully expects his board can submit their comment before the ninth. And furthermore, if he. If his board fails to do that, then we will hold the hearing, we will reschedule the hearing for. The next ZVA meeting date, which is the 23rd of April. So it's gonna be the ninth unless planning board fails to submit its comment, in which case we will re-announce it for the 23rd.
Well, just a double contingency.
Yeah.
It just covers all bases to say that we're, we're making it public that this is.
Right, so that is the, the motion for those two dates. Second that, all in favor?
All right. I have a question for you, just real quick, is this a referral to the planning board, just all? For houses in the historic district?
For all ZVA applications, it's, it's not a historic thing.
And that's a name?
I, I think it was buried in the old code, but it wasn't necessarily complied with a lot.
Yes, have anything to do with it?
No. I'm assuming, I, I didn't ask this, I should have, but are, are you board members available on the ninth, I mean, or at least three of you? You can all be here.
By assumption when we're.
Okay.
In favor, we're saying.
And also 23rd. And also twenty third, actually, if, if the worst case, which is unlikely, but.
And that was also before I learned that we have lack autonomy and empowerment now based on what was found in referring it to the planning board.
But, no, they maybe, sometimes they may. You may have something useful to help us.
Yeah, exactly.
So, alright.
You can say whatever you want, it'll be overruled.
That covers five furnistry. Can you? So. Can you revise your zoning conformance chart? To reflect the new building area, and it would be useful also if you could. Um, add a couple of columns so that it. Um, matches what appears in the application form, namely, give current proposed. And um, like required current proposed and difference.
Okay.
So at a glance, we can see, or the public can see. Uh, where, how it is now. How you propose to make it and, and what kind of difference that will make.
Right, and maybe also just a little. Arrow that points to that overhand in the back. Point out that this is not. Part of the area covered. Put, so I say you can put the uh. Code section. That deals with the horizontal plane, it, it just makes it clear for anybody looking at it.
Yeah, a note saying that.
I think you're covered there.
Yeah, it will inform the public.
Yeah, what, what is this?
Yeah, it's the, it's in the beginning of the chapter, the definitions, so it's one thirty four dash two. Definition, it's under area comma building.
The board wanted the planning board to get the revised. Documents or are we okay to spend?
Um, it would be ideal. Um, yeah, they could, not that of it, have the revised available, yeah. If you send them to Karen and she posts them on page, on, on the webpage, then I can just tell the planning board to look there.
Should we take these back with us or just leave them to Karen?
Um, what do you prefer Karen? You wanna?
Because these are all online.
Yes, they're all.
They're all online and, and they're gonna partly be updated.
Okay, so, alright, so we hand it back to you.
Do you need me to provide uh new prints or updated prints of just this?
Do you wanna write it? On there? Well, I don't know that, well, the, the new updated will be on the website, right?
I would have to.
Yeah.
Put it up on the website.
So I don't necessarily need.
Well, we should have printouts of the pages that changed, can you do a printout just of like the one, the page that the zoning conformance chart?
Six copies or whatever.
Yeah, yes, and then. Karen can just replace the obsolete pages with the new ones.
Great, thanks, yeah, that's helpful.
The next item is the workshop. One thirty five, that, one thirty three dash one thirty five. Thanks for coming.
So like, you've got verbal intro.
Go ahead, yeah, tell us about it.
Well, my, my client here, Matthew Beechack, who lives on Biden Street.
Sorry, this is handy.
And he's um. He's uh, he and his brother but purchased the uh. Structure adjacent to Hudson Hills, which is another historic house, actually quite similar to mine, but includes. The, the neighboring property all in one, so it's, his is not divided down the middle like mine, but it's essentially the same uh, structure. So um, it's the one where the um. Where Wild was most recently situated. And so it's in fairly rough shape currently, and it's had, you know, fire and some other things. But we're looking to um. Extend a, a second story addition, which primarily, you know, has the, what, the west side, so. Like mine, it's, you know, kind of an, an original structure, and then one that has an addition off the back, so we pretty much wanna match that addition off the back, so. Um, then we also would like to take, okay, the. The first floor is a combination of a commercial space on the east side, and then the other half is the first floor. Other, of the residential unit that then. Covers the second story entirely, so it's a single. Family residence that takes up both sides. Notice that it's two different street addresses, right, so um. So one thirty three is the residential side, one thirty five is the commercial. Storage front essentially, and so what Matt would like to do is take the. Uh, that first floor residential portion on one thirty three and convert that to a commercial space. Um, and then. Um, access from the, the rear yard to separate apartments upstairs.
Yeah, it'll be great to get that building fixed up.
We have the right guy for the job.
So um. You'll notice that we're proposing to replace the existing suit, you can see on the, on our cover page here. Um, yeah, basically, uh, a wire line diagram of the building that's Hudson Hills and then. Front line, so. Um, we're proposing the entire porch coming across the front. And um. The porch steps are situated so that they're. That we're adjusting for the great change, which is a big challenge for a lot of these uh, main street properties. So by situating the steps as we have, as basically on the uphill and on the downhill side of the slope, we're able to. Um, adjust to make. Even level cuts. Much safer. So the drawing still reflects our understanding based on the old code, based on how many. On driveway, that no longer is really permissible account, but I believe our, our. Um, parking count doesn't include those three actions.
Well, I, I believe that the question of parking will be covered by the planning board, that's their.
Yeah.
Their responsibility.
And, yeah, get a question about. A lot area coverage, is it for this one or for?
This one, yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I was looking at the um, the portion that was. The, the difference between. I might, I might have been looking at this something before.
Was there any overhang, are there any? There aren't no real overhang.
Um, well, there's, there's the porch that is covered, right, so that's, and that was included in my calculations. Um, and then there's a portion that's covered by the rear deck.
Yeah, it seems to me the rear deck was the most kind of complicated. Um, to, to translate into a building area. So you should only be counting. The portions of the rear deck that are covered, that have a roof, so there's a kind of key thing. Where the, the, the decking on the second floor forms a roof over the first floor, so you should be counting just that roofed. Area, including the basement steps, which had seemed to have a little bit of that second floor deck, so. And I was worried you may have overcounted, like. Counted out too far, and I just wanted to make sure you were. Limiting yourself to the covered areas and not including the staircase, that staircase going up to the second floor is not part of the building area.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, and something that's a little bit tricky. You know, to look, to kind of overlay the. The first floor with the, the second floor, you can see that. The, the um. Back of the structure, the, the first floor. Is about this line here.
Right.
So uh, so this, this is the, the extended portion of the back at, at the lower level. And then we have this little portion that's the overhang, so this T is the. Question in question, right? Um, essentially.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, since we have an. Portion that's not covered down below, and this high little sliver here, um, adjacent to the stairs, it's not covered as well below.
Okay.
So, so when I did the rear yard calculation, I, I think that's the number that I have taken. But it's been a while since. So you can see here. Um, this actually shows that exactly what I just. Patched out, but here's the, the ground floor of putting. Including the front porch. Um, and then the portion that's covered by that T right there. That's how I got to that number.
Okay, so the, the gray shaded area is the, includes the roof of the, the decking of the second floor.
Yeah.
Which forms a kind of roof over the first.
Yeah, that portion right there.
Okay. Alright, and you've got the front porch as well, so, yeah, that's, that's, looks like the correct way to figure it.
Yeah, yeah, the seventeen thirty eight.
Alright, that's good, that confirms. That number. So when you um. When you plug that number in, you. You end up with a lot coverage of just. Couple of points over. Over the maximum.
On that one that shows the. Dated T section, what, what, that was that?
Uh, site one oh one is the. Just put us the total shade of area.
I may not have it.
It's, yeah, it says he is like.
Oh, that, that's my first one.
The third sheet.
Oh, so that one's shaded, the one you have is shaded additionally, or you just, you just.
No, I just did it on the, it was on the roof. That was on the uh. One oh two maybe? Yeah, so A one oh two is what I should, just to try to show that blow up the area, it's. Oh, you mean not, no, because it, yeah.
But I don't have the shaded thing you were showing me.
Yeah, you're right.
One oh one.
No, that's, that's that one, so. At the site, site one oh one.
Okay.
So A one oh two, that. Yeah, I just did that by hand.
Where's the shaded one, that, that one here?
This one here, site one oh one, which is.
That's, this is different.
Well, that's weird. Oh, you know what? You know what it is? Dude, he just got in, she did. Then like, look at how slick I am.
How was it that I noticed that little difference?
It's this little bit right here.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to be sure that, because I can't see it, and I, I, no, I just wanted to say that. You should put that little dimension, so with, with those little extra dimensions of anybody who's looking to calculate.
Yeah.
You know, that little butt out, that's all.
So your version still says seventeen thirty eight point eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, that should be done by a polyline, so it should be. You know.
No, I get it, I get it.
Eight point. Seventeen thirty eight point. Seventeen thirty eight point eight, so I'd be this way.
Okay. And that leads to a coverage of thirty eight percent. Um, so the. Um, the code enforcement officer flagged. Let's find the referral here. Flagged.
Thirty five percent?
He flagged lot coverage, like.
Yeah.
And, and he also flagged lot area. Uh, but I don't know that I agree with that, and I wanted to discuss that with the board members, if that's. If the lot air, the, the lot area that is beside the lot is going up slightly. Because um. The owner is buying strip sidewalk. So um. But it will still be under the minimum, the code minimum. In my mind, that does not. Necessitate a variance. Um, it's a, it's a, it's the, in fact, the nonconformance becomes less, the property is. Closer to conforming than it was, I mean. If, chapter, in chapter one thirty four nineteen K. The code talks about. About lots. Lots that are, I'll read you the. What it says. Nonconforming lot size. One thirty four nineteen K, existing nonconforming lot. And I'll, I'll leave out the irrelevant parts, it says, a lot in any district. Which has a total lot area less than required herein. May be used and developed in conformity with all other regulations. So um. It does not, so you, you can't. Shrink your lot, if it starts out nonconforming, you can make it even smaller for some reason, but you, it's nothing here about. Preventing you from making it bigger. I mean, it, it does not violate the spirit of the code to reduce the nonconformity. The zoning codes are supposed to always be encouraging conformity. Encouraging meeting the standards and to, and that, in this, in this case, property is going more toward meeting the standard, so I don't. I don't really agree with the. Um, assessment that a variance is needed for that particular point.
Well, is adding more. Area, even though. Additional areas may be covered, is it, is it adding more than? What seeks to be added on to, like a structure in this case? Or is it a wash, is that what I'm?
Um, well, you, are you talking about coverage of building coverage?
Well, building coverage, because we're, oh, you, you're currently talking about lots.
Yeah, now I'm just talking about the lot area.
Oh, lot size?
Increasing.
Lot size, right, yeah, well, no, if you're creasing it, it's. It's not. Needing a variance, because it already preexists.
Right, it's existing.
Yeah, so I agree with you, I, I agree with your announcement.
Yeah, okay, so.
And I think we make that point when we write something, so we refer back to.
Yeah, when, when and if. A resolution is issued approving the application. I will include a mention that we didn't, we disregarded the CEO's reference to a variance for lot area.
Right. Exactly, for, for the reason we just said. That it's covered, anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we've talked about variances needed.
As we mentioned before, if you could do, take photos, it gives an idea of looking around the neighborhood. Uh, and it, and it super enclose. And the structural developments. If you can do that, and you don't have to, like, like we said, one, one or two.
We actually have a photo sheet set up for the H C R B.
Definitely, right, and, you know, we can just pass it around or it's online or. And you went through the.
I'm getting to that, yeah, there's, the application does not include a list of neighbors, so. The same question here. Everyone whose property adjoins and everyone directly opposite on the, across Main Street, as well as anyone else who can see. The property, and this building is pretty visible, so on Main Street, so seems to be everybody from the pizza shop. Up to the firehouse. Needs to be notified, so that's going from one eighteen. Up to one forty four Main Street on that side. And then. On the other side. One twenty nine dash thirty one, that's the old Hudson Hills. That's an adjoining property. One thirty seven, which adjoins on the other side. Who Campbell and for Campbell. Which are they also adjoined in that. Which, um, are they also adjoining? And that, that covers the backyard. Two was that little one right behind Hudson Hill? Yeah. And then four, four extends a hallway. Ross.
Yeah, yeah. And then. Yeah, it's, it keeps on going. So. Um, Hudson Hills, right? Then. Two. Go to, right. Yeah. Oh, you're right. Yeah. Then for, right. It's just one. That's right.
No.
You know, same with notifying church street down to like, uh. First door, um, on corner of garden and main.
Yeah, firehouse.
Yeah, catty corner to the, in essence, almost catty corner.
You know, everybody on that, on that block, except that I don't know that the firehouse is necessary. Now, I, I mentioned that we need the deed. We still need the deed for that. Do you have that? That's, um.
Um, Matt had, uh, texted it to me, but, um.
Standard part of the application. It lets us, confirms to us that you're the owner and also sometimes deeds have. Restrictions or information that's relevant to, to use of the property.
You need, how many?
It should be, uh, six. It shouldn't form an integral part of the application. So if you should add it. Um, do an updated electronic version that includes the deed and, and the adjustments to. I don't, I don't know that we, I guess we haven't come up with any. Yeah, I guess we haven't come up with any other adjustments needed to this application. So, uh, we just need a, a new version that includes the deed. Quickly posted. And then six printouts of just the deed and Karen can add it to the, to the other printout. So. I, I believe we will, would want to ensure that the sidewalk purchase is completed legally approved, fully approved by the board. I know. Yeah, I guess they approved it in principle pending certain pending confirmation of the price.
I, that's the little bit of information that I managed to get. I have not been getting any updates. And it's a little bit of a frustration.
Well, as long as it's fully approved by the date of the hearing. So that we, we know that the numbers we're working with are, are rock solid and not having to change.
The, um, so this. Yeah. Yeah, um. Yeah, I, I think this is probably the survey is the best one. It's not clear. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so essentially like here, you can see other ports reference here. Um, that's essentially where the, um, that, that's Hudson Hills covered porch. And so the, basically right up to that edge is the. Is the sidewalk. So we're. So we're, um, purchasing the portion that is completely like directly aligned with Hudson Hills and just.
Does that mean recovered porch and stove are on village property right now?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have anything more. Is there a consensus that the application is ready for a hearing except for these few minor things you've been mentioning? Then I move that we. Matt, the, or the public hearing, that the next step is to have a public hearing, which is where the application is final. We announce a hearing to the public and they can come and. Theoretically, if anyone has any objection, then they're able to speak and, um, before the board makes a decision. So, um. The question of, we have to publish the date in, in advance and, and which means we can't have the hearing any sooner than four weeks from now at the soonest. Um, which would be April, um. Yeah, April ninth, second Tuesday, Tuesday, April ninth, seven o'clock. Are you available now? Yeah, I was gonna, so I was gonna. Yes, I've moved that we hold the hearing on that day contingent on an assurance from the planning board that. Um, they will not have trouble returning a comment by then. But if they, um, fail to return the comment, um, then I'm moving that. We alternatively reschedule the hearing and have it on the twenty third instead to Tuesday, the twenty third of it. That's my motion.
Don't, don't mean to interrupt, but, um, don't want to sound like the kid who's asking for more homework, but, um, we are in front of the planning board.
That's right. This is the one that, this is the easy one. Cause they, they already know about it. So. I have much less concern that they will, I, I do think we've got to refer to them just because. The code says to. But I, I, I'm sure obviously they know about it and just based on their knowledge, whether they would have anything they would want to tell us. From the point of view of zoning, which maybe potentially maybe they haven't done yet and they want to. So I do have to give them that opportunity to submit a comment.
Okay.
But it should be a very cut and dried.
So use, uh, you know, commercial and residential are common, right? But are there any issues that the zoning boards that, uh, the, uh, planning board said about use?
Well, parking is the issue, you know, and, um, essentially, um, you know, the, the prescribed remedy to that is. Purchasing, you know, indulgences.
Alright, so that's my motion, right? Yeah, so that, that's all set. I mean, it's such a, you know. That, that no one's gonna be unhappy, but. Let's see a building like that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We're excited about it.
Well, I want to say thank you. I know you guys don't have a taste for this stuff. I do appreciate all that you do for the village. And it's nice to have enough of the people on the board. Thank you.
And let's return the application to Karen. So she can update it. You'll be adding the deed to Karen.
So that's great that that building.
No.
In addition over the, the old restaurant.
Over Hudson Hills?
Yeah.
An addition over it?
Yeah, that one reexists or. Well, we're just not even talking about Hudson Hills. The whole building.
Exactly. We're just talking about.
Yeah. One thirty five, one thirty three, one thirty five, and then Hudson Hills is centered.
Right. There's a little alley between them.
That's why, that's the other thing I was gonna ask, cause it looked like the roof was blocking one of the proposed. So that makes sense about what they did with the window.
If I can, other stuff that I shouldn't have handed to you, um.
Forgot to mention to James that, um, we will send him, uh. Um, and now the, the notice that, that he's got to mail, the actual printed notice. So, but before we can do that, I have to talk to the planning board and make sure they're all okay with that. I do want to ask the trustees if we can. Change that thirty day rule. It really is a. Yeah.
I think they were just trying to buy time.
I think it's standard. I, I, the consultant put that in, the zoning expert who's consulting put that in. I think that's probably the norm.
The other thing we could do is just make it complete and complete it. So, i- if they're unwilling to do it, we could just always do that. They could put more on it, some new.
Well, the, the previous board planning chair, um. Said to me that she would endeavor to, she understood the problems and she would always endeavor to get an answer right away. And left far less than thirty days.
Well, and I think it helps the village all around. I think I handed you too many documents out of mine. I, I. Yeah, that's the, the, the last packet I gave.
Well, it could be the top one.
Let us next look at the revised application. The revised ZDA application. Yeah, so, um. Like, what changes that you guys. Uh, requested and that, that consists of, um. First, there's a new, new letterhead, which Karen and Jeff worked out to ma- make these things look nice and official. Um, and I put in, let's see, what did I? Oh, yeah. The big thing was on page five. Where it says, I, we appeal for interpretation or variance. And the, the board members rightly suggested putting in a definition of those two, those two types.
That is just straightforward, right? Numbers. Yeah, I think it's, uh. Very help. I, I just hope the applicant be more informed when they're coming to us.
Right.
Why, what we're thinking about.
Right. And on page seven, um, John suggests clarifying item one, under the instructions. About the location of this table, just. I had, added a link as well, a hyperlink to the web version of the chapter.
That's nice. The hyperlink is the underlying chapter. I want to take some right to it.
It'll be in the PDF, it'll be a link, clickable link.
Right.
Oh, one thing I forgot to look into was, um, Mary Ann's suggestion of being able to fill in the forms. So I will do that. The blanks, collecting the functionality of letting the user fill this out on screen, typing into the blanks. But I, I will look at that and.
Does it help you? Work yourself support and everybody.
Well, it'll help applicants, um. It will help us. It helps us, cause then we get back a clean, like, it's not handwritten. Printed and it's already electronic. They don't have to, some cases they might handwrite it, then scan it. And then we get a, like a, a big file. So those are the only two substantive changes since the last.
Secret ever comes into this, right?
secret is not mentioned, uh, here. I don't think unless. Cause they don't have to do any. Anything with regard to C for yet. At this stage.
Guessing the page nine, that was Button County's lookups tools already a hyperlink?
Yeah, that's right. Um, that is a link to. No one has any more suggestions than I can, um, submit it to the. Board and see if they will approve it. They may, they may want to change things as well.
And we always collect, uh, collect these affidavit sign placement up front.
At the hearing, at the start of the hearing, yeah, they. They can't sign it earlier than that, cause they're testing that it was in place all the way up to the hearing.
Thank you.
So make a motion that we, um, seek permission from the village board to, um. Use this as our new application.
Second that.
Well, in favor. Great.
Thank you for, again, together.
Next. We have two sets of minutes. First, December twenty first, two thousand twenty three. Take a moment to look it over and.
So why these minutes were not approved by. Oh, now the last meeting was not. Doesn't matter.
I guess it just didn't. Just didn't, wasn't there.
I think a map said in both of these.
That takes the pressure off you tonight.
Leaving. What a great idea.
On page one, workshop has to be changed to public hearing. Fourteen Constitution Drive Workshop on an application, it's actually public hearing uh location. I would suggest on page two, what is bulleted list of the applicant's points. I would suggest deleting neighbors to the north have no issues with the proposed project, I don't think it's, I think that's out of bounds or not um. He can't, he can't speak, yeah, he can't speak for what they.
Well, they they didn't appear.
It cannot appear, we did not hear from them one way or the other, so it's just not um. It's not a meaningful comment, it should not be preserved in the minutes. We do note later um on the next page that no neighbors submitted comments, so it's on the record that there were no comments from the public. So, but. He can't speak for other people like that.
We can write that into the code.
When I ride my bike.
Avoider.
That's interesting, you never. He's chair of the planning committee.
Yeah, the reading this and. You know, keeping your changes. In mind that you expressed as well as, I guess there were already changes here, at least you were earlier.
Oh, Karen made those corrections, I guess, we have before circulating this.
As amended, I would move to approve this for December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, that you go with the. Hearing of the SPAR for residents.
All in favor? I.
And abstain.
Okay, so that passes. Uh next, January eighteenth.
After this one, John. Pick those two things out, I was like, I better read this, you know, a little more in depth. Because I do agree with you on the fact that uh there was no comment made, that that's only like an evidentiary statement right there. Hearsays, I might say. If not speculation.
I know you just can't help it.
Yeah, especially when I got.
I I have no comments.
I'll move to through the meeting minutes for January eighteenth. Twenty twenty-four as written.
I second the motion, all in favor? Actually, you can, no, you can vote.
The number of times that we thank Eric for his work on the application. All the time, I I I know. There's a lot going on.
Anyone have any other business?
Second, Mary Ann?
All in favor?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Something to do with church or something like. Purple people eaters. Must be holding cross in the uh room, they're all purple, who else is a purple uh? Royalty is purple, but in college, I'm trying to think about.
Oh, University of Washington? New York University.
Yes, there, there you go, see you. There you go, see, that's why you wear the. Here go, this doesn't say Washington. That's funny, see, that is amazing, you pull that out, so the Crusaders, and I'm just trying to think, there must be one more that we can think of. I'm trying to think, there's one other one.
Oh, there's a lot of purple.
Well, I know there's a lot, but.
I am so unfamiliar with the colleges out here in New York.
Plenty of time.
There's so many, and on the west coast, it's very different, they're just. There's University of Washington.
What are, what are your college colors?
My college color?
Indiana. Wow, that's awesome, the Hoosiers. Were you in California yesterday?
I know Berkeley and the people park right, people park right, nobody even.
No, I remember, I missed the recording.